Great. Hi, everyone. My name is Noah and I am calling to order the first Human Services Commission meeting at 3:10 PM. We will go down the agenda items as listed. And if you have that with you, great. If not, let me know and I can email it to you right now. But first thing we'll do is the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice. Awesome. Next item will be roll call. I have listed the names in no particular order except for what I found on the City Clerk's website. So if there is no opposition to me following that order for the rest of the meeting, that's great. If anybody has another way they would like to do it, please let me know and we can vote on that. Anybody have objections?
Nope.
Perfect. So for the city, we are trying to be as ADA compliant as possible. Some folks who join us might not be, might have visual impairments. So we try to make sure that when we roll call or when we vote, people make it clear who's here and who's voting for what. So every time we vote or we do roll call, we will be doing so by saying names and then the person saying here out loud. So I'll start. Sonia Wilson. They're not here. Bruce Letty?
Here.
Marielle Creasel?
Here.
Tamara Cagle?
Here.
Alexis Hemphill Elsie?
Here.
Boiko Buchinski? Pamela Ramer? And David Pissara?
Here.
Can I apologize if I mispronounced your name? Please let me know because we will be working together. So I want to get it right. Awesome. So we'll go down the agenda. Please note that agenda items may be reordered during the meeting at the discretion of the body. First item, special agenda items. Item 1A, Human Services Commissioner swearing in. The first item of today's meeting is to swear you in. I have been provided a script by the City Clerk's office. I will just go down the same order as roll call and have you all repeat after me. So there's five of you, so we'll do five separate ones. And then the next meetings we'll do the folks who were not here. So if we're going down the same list, we'll start with Bruce Letty. Bruce, if you could just repeat after me. I, Bruce Letty.
I, Bruce Letty.
Do solemnly swear to, uh, do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Human Services Commission.
And that I will faithfully discharge the... What is it? Faithfully discharge the what?
That I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Human Services Commission.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Human Services Commission.
Wonderful. Thank you. Marielle? Return. I, Marielle Creasel.
I, Marielle Creasel.
Marielle, okay, Marielle. Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Human Services Commission.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Human Services Commission.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tamara? Is that right, Tamara? Okay, okay.
That's correct. Thank you.
Your turn. I, Tamara Cagle.
I, Tamara Cagle.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Human Services Commission.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Human Services Commission.
Awesome. Thank you. And now Alexis, your, it's your turn. I, Alexis Hemphill Elsie.
I, Alexis Hemphill Elsie.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Human Services Commission.
And that I will faithfully dis-
Discharge the duties?
Discharge the duties of the Human Services Commission.
Awesome. Thank you. And finally, David. I, David Pissara.
I, David Pissara.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Human Services Commission.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Human Services Commission.
Great. These were subscribed and sworn to before me this 14th day of September 2022. Wonderful. Congratulations. Yay.
Woo! Go team!
Go team. The next, uh, next meeting elsewhere and the three folks who cannot make it to this meeting. So we'll do that again. We'll move on to item 1B, which is drawing the lots to designate Commissioner length terms for the following. We have a couple of different ones that I've listed there. When you also admitted your applications for the Human Services Commission, the term lengths were also posted on the application. So I will not, I will now randomly assign you all these terms. You've seen a randomizer that was approved by the City Clerk's office. So I am going to share my screen. One second. Sorry. All right. Can everybody see this? Three colored wheel, primary colors over here. Wonderful, wonderful. So if you have the agenda in front of you, there are two seats available for partial term ending June 30, 2023. We have two seats available for partial term ending June 30, 2024. Two seats available for partial term ending June 30, 2025. Two seats available for full term ending June 30, 2026. And one seat available for a full term ending on June 30, 2027. So I have already entered all of your names here. We're going to start at the top and go down. So the first two appointments will be for the partial term ending June 30, 2023. As the wind spills, as the wheel spins, it will select a name. I will put it down in my notes and that name will disappear from this wheel. So it will just go down the list like that. So we'll start. First, two seats available for partial term ending June 30, 2023. So David? I don't know if you can hear, but there's clapping.
Now for the- We don't hear the sound effects, no.
Yeah, well, I can hear it. So now for the second one on the term ending June 30, 2023. Marielle? So now for the next two seats, we will be doing the seats available for partial term ending June 30, 2024. And I'll also send this out to y'all so y'all have it as well. Now for the second seat ending in 2024. Tamara? All right, so we're going to move on to the two ending in June 30, 2025. So that's Sonia. And now one more seat for that. Alexis? And now we've got Bruce and Pamela for the term 2020. So the, there are nine seats for this commission and only eight people have been appointed. So for the final one, we just haven't, you know, there's one available seat that has not been assigned by council. Yeah, I did not think that went through. There was an extra seat. So my apologies. If you would like for me to do this over again with the same randomizer, I can assign a blank spot for whoever comes in next. And I will leave that all to your discretion. The last available seat is a full term ending June 30, 2027.
I think we should redo it with a blank spot.
Yeah. It's up to you. That's, as the commission, you can vote on that or if you have no objections, we can move on. So.
Is it possible for you to describe what that mean, like what partial term means specifically? Does it mean that you have to reapply again or is it that that's just the term? Or can you just describe what that means officially?
Give me one second. So partial terms and full terms. The term will officially end at that date, but you can be reappointed by council. And all of these terms have different end years, same date, just end year. The one that I did not take into account for was the full term for June 30, 2027, which would be the longest term in this commission. One second. But yeah, I think that's pretty much how it goes. If, when your term expires, you can still reapply and be reappointed by council.
In terms of term limit though, is there a two-term limit? So if someone has a very short term at the beginning here, they would only have a total of five years or whatever?
Sorry, I'm asking a question as well.
Yeah, no problem.
I am having someone check for me. And in the meantime, I am going to re-upload your names into that wheel. If that is something that we want to re-spin.
So do we need to do this through a through, that? Do we complete motion where I need to make a motion that we redo it? And then needs to be seconded and then we need to be voting on or can we as a commission just agree to redo it? Take a straw poll?
You can make a motion and then you can vote on it? Yes.
I would mo, I would make a motion that we redo the drawing of lots.
Five seconds.
And now we can vote. Um, give me one second. So many windows open, I'm sorry. All right, so now we'll vote on it. So Sonia Wilson is not here. Bruce Letty?
Yes.
Marielle Creasel?
Yes.
Tamara Cagle?
Hi.
Alexis Hemphill Elsie? Alexis? I think you're on mute.
Sorry. Yeah, yes.
Okay. Boiko Buchinski, not here. Pamela Ramer, not here. And David Pissara?
Yes.
All right, your first motion passes. So give me one second while I re-upload all of your names. Okay, so let me share my screen with you all again. All right, I added an extra person named Commissioner X who will be appointed in the future. And this way we have a fair drawing of all available terms. So we'll start again with the two partial terms ending on June 30, 2023. So the first person is Alexis. And let's see, second person is Pamela Ramer. Wonderful. Now we'll move on to the two seats available for partial term ending June 30, 2024. And then the first person for the partial term ending on June 30, 2024 is Tamara Cavil. And the second for the term ending on June 30, 2024 is Bruce Letty. All right, now we are moving to select the two seats available for partial term ending June 30, 2025. The first will be David Pissara. And the second is our future Commissioner, Commissioner X. And now we move to the two seats available for a full term ending June 30, 2026. The first person is Boiko Buchinski. And the second person for the full term ending June 30, 2026 is Sonia Wilson. And through process of elimination, the one seat available for a full term ending on June 30, 2027 is Marielle. Wonderful. So I have made my notes and I will send that all over to the City Clerk's office. But yeah, right? Thank you for being so patient with me. And we'll move on to the next item if there are no more questions. The next item is the consent calendar, which we have nothing on. So we'll move on to item three, study session. So for item 3A, I will be introducing myself to you and what a staff liaison to the boards and commission is. So I'll take it away if you don't mind. I have my little sheet over here. Hello, Human Services Commission. My name is Noah Mendoza, Staff Assistant 3 to the Community Services Department and Staff Liaison to the seven boards and commissions that fall under the department. Great to finally meet y'all. I will be your main point of contact through your time on the commission here at the City of Santa Monica. So I wanted to go over what a staff liaison is to the boards and commissions. My role as your staff liaison is to provide you administrative support. I will work alongside the City Clerk's office, the City Attorney's office, and within the Community Services Department to ensure that you are supported in your work. The Chair and Vice Chair will put together agenda items. They will run the meetings. You will all discuss and take action through votes. And once you create ad-hocs, which are, which are time-limited working groups, you will do independent work and research to report back to the commission. What I do in all of this is keep you all informed of upcoming meetings and cancellations. I'll make sure the agenda is formatted per City Council's guidelines and turned into the City Clerk's office by the deadline. I'll also take care of setting up the meetings, which right now happen virtually. I'll attend regular commission meetings with you to ensure that everything runs smoothly. I'll be there to take attendance minutes, to record votes, and to make sure we do not violate the Brown Act. The Brown Act is California's open meeting law. It requires such things like making meetings open to the public, making meetings publicly noticed 72 hours in advance, ensuring that discussions only happen on items on the agenda, and so on. You can reach out to me if you would like me to provide you some resources on the Brown Act. Other responsibilities of mine will be to manage the commission's website and update it with agendas, public comments, and video recordings. As the commission, your role is to advise council on matters pertaining to the social, economic, and wellness needs of vulnerable community members. This is done by taking formal actions during your meetings and communicating that action to council, usually in the form of a letter. The commission will decide who will write a recommendation letter to council when an action is made. Once you turn that into me, I will format it on official letterhead and ensure it gets to council. Neither, neither the commission or I can make recommendations directly to the department or direct staff's work. The commission's recommendations are made directly to the council. I am the point of contact for any questions the commission might have for the city. Whether it's a question about your email or about clarifying a rule, I cannot, if I cannot answer your question, I can find out the answer and get back to you. As your liaison, I am here to provide you with the administrative support, clarify procedural policy, and help you access publicly available information. I can also help you with the quest, sorry, I can also help you with questions on current city operations. Again, if I do not know the answer, I will direct your question to subject matter experts and make sure it is answered through the proper channel. It is best to reach out to me via email and I will get back to you as soon as I am able to. And please remember that I am here to assist you with, with items pertaining to the commission or the City of Santa Monica. Thank you. If y'all have any questions right now, please feel free to address or speak up as well as I am available via email whenever you want to reach out for any questions or clarifications or assistance with something within the city limits.
I have a question. I know we're, I know we have an ethics training that we're supposed to do with the city attorney. Is, do we do that as a group or can we just do that individually? How is that coordinated?
So I have reached out to the City Clerk's office about the training. They happen, I want to say quarterly. I know that one happened in August, which means the next one is just around the corner as well. I think they're having a meeting for the Chairs and Vice Chairs, a training, sorry, a training for Chairs and Vice Chairs in September. I do not have the dates yet, but when those meetings become available and scheduled, I will definitely be reaching out to you as well. The City Clerk will reach out to all the commissioners in need of the training directly, but I reach out to the commissioners if they want to freshen up their, their memory as well.
Great. Thank you.
Great. If there are no more questions, we can move on to item 3B. Great. So I will now hand it over to Nicole Liner Gigamania. Gigamian, sorry.
You've got it, Noah, Gigamian.
She is the, she is an administrative analyst and she is going to give you an introduction of the Community Services Department, which is where your commission lies. So I'll let her take it over.
Thanks, Noah. So good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Nicole Liner Gigamian, as Noah said, and I'm an administrative analyst with the Housing and Human Services Division. I'm excited to meet you all and welcome you to your new role as Commissioners. And so I'll begin by sharing an overview of the city's org structure and then I'll review the Community Services Department as a whole. And then I'll discuss the Human Services Division and how our annual work plan aligns with City Council priorities and some ways that this commission can support our work. There'll be some time at the end for questions and I'll also note upfront that everything that I'm sharing today will, is also available on the city's website. So in terms of the city's org structure, the City of Santa Monica is a council-manager form of government, which means that our council as an elected body is responsible for establishing policy, passing local ordinances, adopting the city's budget, and developing an overall vision for the city. Under this structure, the mayor performs primarily ceremonial duties and is drawn from the city council. Our council appoints the city manager, the city clerk, and the city attorney, as well as boards and commissions like yourselves. The city manager oversees the daily operations of the city and they implement the policies established by council. The city manager's office also leads the team of city departments and staff to implement the city council's vision based on their established community-wide priorities. So here in Santa Monica, we have 10 departments that report to the city manager's office and the Community Services Department is one of them. So the goals of the Community Service, Services Department, or CSD, are to enrich lives, advance equity, and empower people to thrive by providing a dynamic array of social, cultural, recreational, educational, and housing programs and services developed with and for the community. CSD is made up of four divisions: administration, community recreation, cultural affairs, and housing and human services. The administration division supports the work of the entire department and they do things including budget, human resources, marketing, and communications. Community recreation runs programs and facilities that support physical activities, including the Swim Center, Center and Aquatics Program, gyms, adult sports leagues, and community classes and event permits. Cultural affairs supports the city's vibrant arts and culture community. The division manages cultural events, manages public art, administers grants for local arts and culture organizations, and they oversee the Annenberg Community Beach House. And then finally, the Housing and Human Services Division oversees supportive programs and services for all segments of the community. This includes housing, youth and families, seniors, people with disabilities, people who are low income, and people experiencing homelessness. The Community Services Department also supports five commissions in addition to this Human Services Commission, including the Recreation and Parks Commission, as well as a number of advisory boards and bodies, including aquatics, the Virginia Avenue Park Advisory Board, and field sports. As Noah mentioned, he is the staff liaison and secretary for the CSD commissions. So now I will describe the Housing and Human Services Division, and this is really the division that your work will align most closely with as the Human Services Commission. There are five units within the Housing and Human Services Division. We have administration, housing, youth and families, direct services, which includes the Police Activities League, Virginia Avenue Park, and our Crest program, and people experiencing homelessness, seniors, and people with disabilities. I'll go over each unit and the populations they focus on, as well as the key programs and initiatives that the division is working on. So the Housing and Human Services Division's administration unit is responsible for coordinating the division's budget and financial resources, maintaining oversight of all division contracts and grants, and providing comprehensive administrative support to all HHSD units. Our housing unit focuses on increasing and preserving affordable housing. Some key focus areas include city-funded affordable housing production and preservation, managing the city's inventory of deed-restricted or below-market rate housing, managing rental assistance programs or vouchers. This includes things like housing choice vouchers or Section Eight, continuum of care, Veterans Affairs Supportive Housing, and the Home Voucher Program, which provides ongoing rental subsidies for eligible low-income households to help make local rental units more affordable. They also manage the preserving our diversity or POD program, and this is a program that provides cash-based assistance to low-income, long-term Santa Monica seniors in rent control departments. So as I mentioned before, there is a council-appointed housing commission, which advises council on matters related to affordable housing programs. We also have the Youth and Families Unit, which supports programs that meet a variety of needs for children, youth, and families, and facilitates coordination and collaboration across service providers. Key programs and initiatives include Santa Monica Cradle to Career or C2C, and this is a collaboration between the city, the school district, SMMUSD, Santa Monica College, local service providers, and other community stakeholders to share resources and address key emerging topics and challenges as they relate to Santa Monica youth and families. C2C also develops the Youth Wellbeing Report Card, which uses data to explore the strengths and challenges faced by children in our community and serves as a snapshot of youth well-being in three key areas: learning and school achievement, physical health and development, and behavioral health. The Youth and Families Unit also supports employment services, including education and training services for youth and adults that help build professional skills and secure employment. And they also support behavioral health services, which includes mental health and substance use services for youth and adults, including prevention, treatment, and education. The city has three programs that provide direct services to youth and their families. This is the Police Activities League or PAL, Virginia Avenue Park or VAP, and Childcare, Recreation, Enrichment, Sports Together or CREST. CREST is an after-school program administered collaboratively by the city and the district. School-based programs are offered at all seven elementary schools and include CREST Club, which is a program for fourth and fifth graders that runs from school dismissal until 6:00 p.m. and CREST enrichment, which is a variety of classes that serve TK through fifth grade. Both of these programs are fee-based and the city offers financial assistance for low-income families who qualify. PAL or Police Activities League also offers free after-school enrichment programs for youth, and this is for ages six to 17, for youth who live or attend public school in the city, and the classes include educational support, college prep, leadership enhancement, and fitness training. PAL has two sites. One is the PAL Youth Center adjacent to Memorial Park, and the other is the PAL Fitness Gym, which is located at Virginia Avenue Park. PAL has a volunteer board that raises funds to support PAL activities and scholarships. And then Virginia Avenue Park, which serves as a hub for community-based programs that promote the well-being of youth and their parents by offering after-school programs, parent engagement opportunities, community events, employment support, and they also host community partners that provide free social services. VAP has an advisory board that works in collaboration with staff to advise on programs and services to ensure that they meet the needs of the community. And they also have two parent groups that plan and execute events and advise on youth programming. And then our People Experiencing Homelessness, Seniors, and People with Disabilities Unit offers a variety of housing and supportive services to assist people experiencing homelessness and prevent vulnerable housed Santa Monicans from becoming homeless. Some key initiatives in this area include interdepartmental coordination, wherein HHSD staff work closely with partners from the Police Department, the Fire Department, the City Attorney's Office, Public Works, the library, and rent control to coordinate efforts, connect vulnerable community members to assistance, and provide training to staff who regularly encounter people experiencing homelessness. City funding also supports homeless prevention through legal assistance, services coordination, and supportive services for people at imminent risk of homelessness. And then the city also has field-based services, and there are three full-time city-funded multidisciplinary teams that make direct contact with people experiencing homelessness to provide medical care, psychiatric treatment, and medically-based substance use treatment, and help move people into interim and permanent housing. In May of this year, staff delivered a comprehensive presentation and report to city council on local efforts to address the regional homelessness crisis. And I'm going to pop that link in the chat so that you all can take some time to review that report on your own time. And Noah will also be including all these links in the meeting notes, so you can go back to them that way as well. The People Experiencing Homelessness, Seniors, and People with Disabilities Unit also supports a variety of housing retention services, transportation, and supportive and safety net services for seniors and people with disabilities. Some key areas for these groups include care management, aging-in-place, independent living, meal services for seniors and homebound households, and supportive transportation assistance. So the division is also leading city efforts to address behavioral health issues in our community. To this end, we have just entered into a partnership with Initium Health to develop a behavioral health strategy and assess the feasibility of local versus regional approaches to addressing Santa Monica's need. Council actually voted last night to award the bid to Initium Health, and I will go ahead and share the link in the chat where you can learn more about the selection process and planned work around this initiative. That one. And then finally, the Housing and Human Services Division also administers the Human Services Grants Program or HSGP. The HSGP provides approximately $8 million annually through a four-year grant cycle to organizations that serve Santa Monica community members who are underserved and low-income, including youth and families, seniors, people with disabilities, and people experiencing homelessness. So the current grant cycle will conclude in June 2023. 19 agencies are currently receiving funding and approximately 30,000 residents are served annually. And we're gearing up to release the new RFP in the next few weeks for the upcoming grant cycle, which will run from July 2023 through June 2027. And you can learn more about the Human Services Grants Program and the new RFP at this link that I'll pop in the chat now. So now that you have an overview of the CSD and the Housing and Human Services Division, I'll talk a bit about city council's priorities and some key ways in which the city's annual work plan, particularly items from the Housing and Human Services Division, supports those priorities. So council has set the following three community priorities through 2023, and I'll share these in no particular order. Equitable, inclusive, economic recovery, which includes cultivating equitable and inclusive economic opportunity and recovery, including access for all community members to things like educational, employment, and economic resources, and creating a community where differences in life outcomes cannot be predicted by race, class, or other identities. The next priority is addressing homelessness, which includes preventing housed Santa Monicans from becoming homeless, addressing the behavioral health needs of vulnerable individuals, and advocating for regional capacity to address homelessness. And a third priority is clean and safe Santa Monica, and this includes creating an atmosphere marked by clean and safe public spaces and neighborhoods. So as a division, we are working on several items in the city's work plan that support these three council priorities and that you all might want to take into consideration as you create your own work plan as a council advisory body. So as I previously mentioned, the new RFP for the Human Services Grants Program will be released soon, and we are looking for raiders to support the application review process. And this is a really great way to learn more about the Human Services Grants Program and really the human services landscape here in Santa Monica more broadly. More information about the raider panel and the statement of interest, which we are asking anyone interested in being on the panel to complete, will be available on the HSGP website as it becomes available, and that's that last link that I put in the chat. There's currently a draft raider statement of interest available on the site, which was shared with city council last month. I also mentioned that the division is developing a behavioral health strategy as part of city efforts to address behavioral health issues here in Santa Monica. This work really intersects with many different populations and is a major undertaking. Initium Health's feasibility study will include a community engagement process to inform a strategy to move this work forward. And so there's an exciting opportunity for this commission to partner with the Disabilities Commission to help host those community engagement meetings with Initium Health. And then finally, the division coordinates a homeless count every year in partnership with the Los Angeles Homeless Services Authority or LASSA. And the count is an opportunity to understand the scope of people experiencing homelessness in our community and regionally in order for the city and county to most effectively and efficiently allocate resources. As Commissioners, each of you can form your own three-to-four-person teams, and you can also support the division with the recruitment process to ensure we have a robust team of volunteers to make the count a success. So those are some of the HHSD priorities for this fiscal year, and we are looking forward to having this commission help advance the city's work plan in support of council priorities. Like I said, all of the information I shared is available online through the city's website. With the exception of the city's work plan, this is currently being finalized and will be available soon. So with that, I will wrap up my overview of our department and our division, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you all might have.
Nicole, you mentioned most recently the behavioral health priority, and you said that they will be partnering with, which department was that, that you said?
Yeah, so one of the things that Initium Health is contracted to do is a community engagement process to understand what the needs of our community are, and really that extends beyond just Santa Monica because we know that behavioral health issues don't stay within city lines. And so there's an opportunity for this commission to partner with the Disabilities Commission to help host those community engagement events.
Thank you.
Thanks for the presentation, Nicole. That's great. I'm curious about what Initium Health's mandate is versus, I think there was a similar kind of community survey done by, is it Moss Adams? Is that what they're called? That, you know what I'm talking about, that I think their report was due soon or is coming out at the end of the year. And I'm just wondering in what way this initiative is different from that one and when we can expect to see that report?
Sure, yeah. So Initium Health is contracted to look into a behavioral health strategy for the city, like I said, whereas Moss Adams is working on a review of our Human Services Grants Programs agencies. So they're two separate pieces. And the Moss Adams report, I believe, is due out in early 2023.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
I do want to say that if you have any questions for Nicole, this would be the best time because I think she might log out after this to go back to work. She will not be joining us for the rest of the meeting.
Just one quick question. What's the Human Services Grant, like, what's it supposed to cover?
Sure, yeah. So the Human Services Grants Program is really meant to serve a broad range of our population, so anyone who is low-income, unhoused, youth families, all of the above, any population in need. So we have limited funds. It's only $8 million to serve the entire community. So we have to be selective about the agencies that receive funding, but the program is meant to support our community's most vulnerable individuals.
Can I ask a follow-up question? So what I heard was that's a fund that goes out to nonprofits to support various community members in need. Is that correct? Looks like you're saying yes.
Yes, nonprofits receive funding through the city and then to administer their programs.
Awesome. Thank you.
Yep. Bruce, go ahead.
I know that part of the development agreement with St. John's Hospital was not just the one-time $10 million contribution to the city towards mental health, but also an annual contribution that could be given as similar to the HSG grants to various nonprofits in the city. Do you know if that's something that we would have any input on the implementation of that money or how that money is going to be distributed?
That I'm not sure about. Let me, let me look into that. I don't believe that the Human Services Commission will have input on that annual contribution from St. John's. It'll be more focused on the community engagement process to help develop the behavioral health strategy more broadly for the city.
And we don't have a direct connection to the grants themselves either, the HSG grants. Are those done through just a separate committee of some kind?
Yeah, so like I said, we're right now, we're preparing to release the RFP, and we're also preparing, what we'll also have is an open period where people could like to be on the raider panel and submit a statement of interest. So that is how you can have some input in agencies that are selected. You can review applications and then be part of the process of determining which agencies get funded, and that will be a whole team of people working on that. But I do encourage anyone who's interested in that process to submit a statement of interest to be on that raider review panel.
Great, thanks.
Anyone else?
When is the homeless count done?
The homeless count is in February. This past year it was in January, or it's usually in January, my apologies. Last, this past year it was in February because of rain, I believe. So, so yeah, we're planning for last Wednesday in January.
I think they actually delayed it more because of the wave in COVID that happened over the holiday.
That's, you're right, Bruce. You know better than I do.
No, I've just, I've done the count many years, many years in a row.
I know that. You're right. It was, it was because of COVID. Thank you.
Because they're supposed to do it rain or shine.
Thank you, Nicole.
Thank you all. Welcome.
All right. Thanks, Nicole. I'll see you later.
Thank you, Nicole.
Great. So we are done with item three. Before we move on, I have clarification on your questions about the term length. So we drew a lot to determine your current term length. Some of them are shorter, some of them are longer. When your term ends for this one term length, you have the option of applying to be reinstated by council to serve a full term on the commission. Full terms are always four years. And they do this to stagger, you know, so that not everybody on the commission is leaving at the same time. So just some of you got shorter terms, some of you got longer terms, but you can apply to be reinstated when your term ends for a full term. I hope that clarifies, and I'm sorry I did not have that answer before.
No worries. Thanks.
Awesome. Great. So now to move down the agenda, we are on item nine, Human Services Commission Member Discussion Item. So per City Clerk's guidance, we always have to elect a chair and a vice chair. So the first item of nine A will have a elected chair and a vice chair. The chair and vice chair will be the ones who will take active leadership roles with the commission. It will be the ones communicating with the commission to create the agendas, lead the meetings and discussions, and ensure the success of the commission as a group. I had previously emailed you the commission's, I have previously, I had previously emailed to the commission all of your Human Service Commission applications. I thought that having some background information on your fellow commissioners would make this process a little more smoother rather than electing somebody you have no information on. So the way that elections work is that you can nominate yourself or somebody else. There does not need to be a second nomination, oh, I'm sorry, there does not need to be a second to that nomination. And once we have our candidates, if you are all in agreement, we can have them we can have them speak a little about their background or what would make them, their, the, you know, what would make them better at this role than others, and then we can do a roll call. So we will start with the chair. Do we have any nominations? Bruce?
I wanted to nominate Marielle. I think the fact that she's been a chair of a commission already and has the experience on the Disability Commission would be a valuable contribution, and so I nominate her.
Okay. Any more nominations? Okay. And Marielle, do you accept the nomination?
I accept the nomination. Thank you, Bruce.
Awesome. So her her rules, we will still have to do a roll call. If you would like to give Marielle your vote, say aye. If you would not like to give her your vote, say nay, or you can also abstain. So we'll go down the list, and even for the folks who aren't here, I still have to go down the list, so we'll start with Sonia Wilson. Is absent. Bruce Letty?
Yes.
Marielle Creesel?
Yes.
Tamara Cagle?
Yes, it's Cagle, by the way.
Cagle, sorry. My apologies. Cagle, Tamara Cagle. Alexis Hemphill Elsie?
Yes.
Boiko Puchinsky? Pamela Raymer? And David Pizarro?
Yes.
Wonderful. Congratulations, Marielle.
Thank you.
You are the new chair. So now we move on to the vice chair. As the new chair, elected chair, you can take over from this point on the agenda, or if you would like for me to continue and finish this first meeting, just because it is the first meeting of the Human Service Commission, I am more than glad to do that as well.
Feel free, Noe, to, to keep going.
Okay, great, wonderful. And you will be taking lead next meeting.
Will do.
So now, do we have any nominations for the vice chair? Bruce?
I'm just full of ideas. Every, I think everybody would be great, I should say, first of all, but I, I thought that Tamara's experience as a public defender and also as a a member of the Social Services Commission, which gives her some institutional knowledge that's relevant for us, makes her a very good candidate. And I would have said even as chair, but you know, it was a 50-50.
Wonderful, wonderful.
I nominate Tamara.
Wonderful. Are there any more nominations? Okay. Any more nominations, Alexis? I, no, okay, sorry. It seemed like you wanted to say something. All right. Tamara, do you accept the nomination?
I guess I, yes, I do accept. I was not expecting that, but sure, yeah.
Okay, great. So I will take roll call again, and we'll move on from there. So Sonia Wilson, absent, Bruce Letty?
Yes.
Marielle Creesel?
Yes.
Tamara Cagle?
Yes.
Alexis Hemphill Elsie?
Yes.
Boiko Puchinsky? Pamela Raymer? And David Pizarro?
Yes.
Congratulations, you are the vice chair of the Human Services Commission. Great, so I'll send this all over to the city clerk's office after, and they'll have that information and update on their website. Moving on to item nine B, discussion and possible action to adopt bylaws. So when we, when the commission wants to take action on an agenda item, they have to choose the wording correctly. So discussion and possible action will allow us to talk about and vote on an item on the agenda. If we just wrote discussion on bylaws, all we can do is look at the bylaws. There, we couldn't vote on it to adopt it, we couldn't make changes, it would just be us looking at it. So when you see items with particular wording, it's for a reason. So I had sent you all the bylaws the other night. For item nine B, the commission must formally adopt their commission bylaws. Council created and approved a template for bylaws that makes them uniform to all commissions. The only real change to these bylaws lies in the date, the time, and the location for the commission meeting. I am not sure if you all had a chance to, to read the bylaws on, like the rules, guidelines of the commission. And, and yeah. You, y'all want to discuss it? If somebody wants to make a motion to adopt the bylaws, that can do it. That's Bruce.
I had a couple of questions about the meeting. First, just personally, I would prefer if it was later in the day or even early evening, like a 5:30. Most of the commissions meet closer to that time, and midday is, is difficult for many of us who work. So that was one suggestion. I don't know if we do that as a motion or whether people want to discuss it. Then I have a second idea too, so.
Okay, yeah. So I do want to say that the time for this commission was chosen specifically for mainly two reasons. One is that this commission encompasses three commissions that have been sunset. The Senior Commission, the Commission of Status of Women, and the Social Services Commission. And what the city had found is that these groups and the population that attended or joined these commissions, this was the best time for them. So that is, one is, one of the reasons why this commission meets at 3:00 PM. I also, the second reason is because I am also the liaison to seven other commissions to the Community Services Department. And those happen on various different days and times as well. So Wednesday was also, the second Wednesday was also chosen because it makes me available to be present to assist you all. If you would like to look into changing the, the time or the date, that is something that you, as a commission, can, can do. I would just advise that we look into the availability of all the commission. You know, there's a couple of folks who aren't present, as well as one available seat still out there that has people who have applied for it. And if the date and time changes, I don't know what that means for those applicants.
Sure. Noe? Would it be possible to go earlier in the day? Would that also be a possibility?
It all lies within what, yes, but it is all up to you as a group.
I'm just, I, I hear Bruce, it's like, I agree. It's like 3 o'clock is a weird start time. It's almost like if you, if you started at 1, I could block off the whole afternoon. And so I would just know. Whereas here, it's like, there's some work to be done, and then there's the commission time. So would that help you, Bruce, if we were to change it to like a 1 o'clock?
Not particularly. Sorry, I, sorry, for me, it's just, the end of day would certainly be better, but you know, I, I agreed to do this at this time. So if other people don't have a similar circumstance or don't want to move it, I will make this work. I just wanted to throw it out there.
Noe, do most of the commissions and boards that you're the liaison for, are they meeting after hours at 7:00 or during the day? I know Social Services Commission did meet at 7:00 at night.
Yeah, so for the other ones that I'm involved with are after hours. Well, when I say after hours, after regular work hours, I think my earliest one is 6:00 PM. And my latest one is 7:30 PM. I understand that this is something that, you know, there's a lot to take into consideration. Another option for y'all is you can form your first ad hoc. And that is a small group of no more than three commissioners to comply with the Brown Act. And you can do your research, and when I say research, just gather people's schedules and see what is the best time to do, to move it to. That is one option, or as the new chair and vice chair, you can also just reach out to your fellow commissioners and ask for that information. And we could put this in a future agenda item to discuss next meeting.
That would be great. I don't know what, do, do any of the other, the rest of you have any other feeling about whether better later or is better like a 5:00 or, I think the earliest one I know of is Planning Commission at 5:30. Everybody else is early evening. I, I don't love evening, but if we could do 5:00 or 5:30, it just feels like that would be easier to accommodate work.
Yeah, I would concur with that. Doing after-hours meetings is preferable for me as well.
The, I have three small children, so the five-hour is actually particularly bad for me. I, I also struggle with during the day, it was work. I, three, I actually can usually make, and I, especially since we're meeting once a quarter. A 3 o'clock is a fine time for me. After-hours, I, I'm gonna prefer later, like 7:00. I know that's, you know, that gets up there. But the 5 o'clock hour is, is particularly difficult for me for regular meetings.
Well, I don't mind 7:00 at all. That, that would be fine. I'm, I, I don't know if, Marielle, you want to like do an informal survey to everybody and see whether there is an alternate time that would work? And obviously, if anybody really can't make it, we've all been, we all applied under the idea of 3 o'clock, so I don't want to mess anybody up by, but if it was better for everybody to do it later, that would be great. And Noah, I know that, you know, we definitely would want to stick to Wednesday because of your, your schedule. Maybe you can let us know whether moving it to slightly later would be a conflict for you or, or not.
For me personally, no. The second Wednesday of each month, I have no other commissions I need to attend. So whatever time works best for you, I can definitely make. So, yeah, I would, I, I I think to take into consideration the people who couldn't make the meeting today.
Yeah.
We might, having done a survey and pushing this item to the next meeting would probably be in their best interest as well as yours.
I would agree with that. I, I think that we, we should do that for, for the next meeting.
I also wonder if the, the community that we're serving has input on that. It, it, would seniors want to be involved late at night if we actually go back to in-person meetings?
Yeah, so right now, all of the Community Service Department boards and commissions will meet virtually until the end of 2022. In the new year, that will be revisited by city and staff to determine how we will meet in the new year. So for right now, it is virtual. I believe you have one more meeting before the year ends, and then you will become quarterly. Of course, you can have special meetings, but you're regularly, you're regularly scheduled meetings. But yes. So if anybody wants to make a motion, we can somebody, one of the commissioners can gather information on the best times and present it for, for the next meeting.
I'll make a motion to that effect, that we gather information about potentially better meeting time to be determined by all commissioners.
I'll second.
Awesome. So
Can I then, as chair, reach out to people and, and get their, their best, their top, like, two times that, that they can meet?
Yeah, that'd be great. I just do want to the Brown Act makes communicating with commissioners kind of, we, we need to make sure everything is public and the decisions are made in the meeting, not behind the scenes. So just, you know, try to gather information to present to the commission and not create a predetermined kind of decision beforehand.
Right. Exactly. Thank you.
Yeah, and for rule sake, I will take votes now for that motion. So we'll start at the top of the list with Sonia Wilson, who is not here today. Bruce Letty?
Yes.
Marielle Creesel?
Yes.
Tamara, was it Cagle or Cagle? I'm sorry.
Cagle, yes.
Tamara Cagle, yes. Alexis Hemphill Elsie?
Yes.
Boiko Puchinsky? Absent. Pamela Raymer? Absent. And David Pizarro?
Yes.
Wonderful. Motion passes. Marielle, you all have your city emails, so everybody's city email will be your first name, period, last name, at SantaMonica.gov. And of course, you can reach out to me if you have any trouble reaching out to anybody. I can connect you for sure.
Great, thank you so much.
Of course, of course. So we will push that to the next meeting. Yes, David?
Not me, Bruce.
Oh, sorry, Bruce.
Yeah, no problem. So in my now becoming a habit of dropping wrenches into this oil machine, I just want to ask about the meeting schedule in terms of how often we're meeting. I'm a little bit concerned that, you know, we've combined three different commissions and then reduced the number of meetings by more than half. We're only meeting every other month, and then soon only quarterly. And it feels a little bit like we're just going to be a performative group here, and we're not going to really be able to be effective if we're not meeting with some more regularity, particularly the quarterly. I just, I don't get how we're expected to really do anything but a perfunctory review of some issues if we're reduced to that level, and we're covering much more ground than any of these commissions did independently. So it feels a little bit like we're being sidelined, and I just want to bring that up and see what the other commissioners feel. Maybe that's just me. And whether it's anything we can address with council.
Yeah, so I know that this is something that council decided on. They, you know, had a staff report and did their, their work and formed this group. But I do also know that their intent seemed to be for y'all to create ad hoc groups to continue to do this work outside of these meetings. So ad hocs, you create these time-limited, small groups of commissioners, no more than three, just so that, you know, decisions are being made. And what you do is each ad hoc focuses on one particular issue or researching for something that is going to be discussed at the next meeting. This ad hoc group does not make any decisions. All they can do is come back to the commission as a whole and present their findings. So for the next meeting, the one particular ad hoc will come back and say, this is what we worked on. This is something that we can decide on whether or not it is the best option. And that's how you continue to do work throughout your whole, you know, the months that you are not meeting in on your regularly scheduled dates. I do not know if y'all are allowed to vote on meeting more regularly. That is something I will have to follow up with the city clerk, just because they made this decision, they chose the, the dates. But y'all are also able to have special meetings. Special meetings happen on dates and times that are not your regularly scheduled meetings. And they run pretty much like a regular meeting on the agenda. It's just with a couple of different administrative omissions. So like, public comment doesn't have to be taken during the special meeting, but it can. For your regular meetings, I have to submit everything to the city clerk's office. to the City Clerk's office within 72 hours. For special meetings, it's 24 hours. But yeah.
Do ad hoc groups or the special meetings, do they require special like agenda-setting process where you post the agenda in advance or?
Only special meetings, ad hoc groups. That is all up to your, your group to plan and get together and talk. So it will be whoever's in that ad hoc up to you to, to make sure that you are able to get together and do the work that your ad hoc group has been assigned. And that doesn't have to be public.
Do, since there were other teams that were kind of collapsed into this, do we have any purview or review of like where they left off when they were dissolved or reinvented? Do we have any other open issues or their last agenda minutes that we can review?
All of that is online on the website, Santa Monica's website. They have recordings, they have agendas, they have minutes. They just, I don't believe there are any items that carried over. I believe that they kind of sunset completely, finish their business and y'all are starting fresh. So we will get direction from the Community Services Department. So Nicole and her team, when issues arise, when decisions need to be made, when recommendations need to be made, they will make sure to reach out to me so that they can be on the agenda and present in front of y'all to, to make recommendations. Council will sometimes also assign certain issues to commissions as well as anything that y'all are aware of or would like to kind of bring into the agenda and talk about. That is also something that happens.
No, Noe, how do we, how do we arrange for a special meeting?
So as the Chair and Vice Chair, they will reach out to the Commission and make sure that there's a quorum. They will make sure that things are there on the agenda to be discussed. What we don't want to do is have a meeting for the sake of a meeting where nothing is, no actions being taken, nothing is being discussed. So when there are items on the agenda that need to be discussed, they can reach out to me and say, hey, we want to have a special meeting on this date, this time, and this is what we want to discuss. And, and yeah, that's, it's as simple as that.
So if I understand that correctly, an ad hoc committee could then make a request to the Chair to call a special meeting? Mariel's saying yes, so I'm going to say that that's, she knows what she's doing because I don't.
That's okay.
My first time.
Yes.
Okay, that, well, that makes sense. So then Bruce, that actually makes, I guess it does make, it gives us flexibility at least in terms of being able to arrange for more meetings to get more done.
Right.
We could probably be more focused because if we have special meetings where we don't have to take in all of the other issues, you probably have a more productive hour or two hours or however long it's going to take.
Yep, that sounds good. I liked, I, I like that better. Who cares what I like? But, but you know, the ad hoc to me feels harder because you're not getting to draw on everyone's expertise. You know, it's, I think we all are doing this as a part-time sideline thing. And it's really helpful to have people with different perspectives and different experiences being able to contribute or help formulate what we're going to recommend moving forward. But I suppose the ad hoc could do some of the groundwork and then bring it to the larger committee. And, and that's, it's a little bit, you know, sideways, but at least it's a, it's an option.
But then the next question for me becomes, how do we establish the ad hoc committees? Is that something where we set up a, a proposed list through the Chair and then that goes on the agenda for the next meeting?
Yeah, or yes, you can have a special agenda item that just says create ad hocks. You can discuss what kind of ad hocks you want to create. Or it could be an item on the agenda that you would like to explore further. And say, let's see, what's on the agenda that I can use as a? Okay, like, like the next thing on the agenda, which is 9C. And this is just for an example. It's discussion and possible action to adopt mission statement. So there is no mission statement right now. It's something that the Commission has to come up with. And you can sit here and talk about it and draft it, of course. But if it is something that you want more, you want to take more time on, instead of sitting here and kind of just going back and forth on a computer, you can create an ad hoc. Say, this is something that we want people to craft carefully. So let's, I would like to make a motion to create an ad hoc for this and for them to come back to us next meeting and present to us, you know, choices, their draft. And then they'll come back to you, having created the mission statement. And then y'all can vote to adopt it as is or y'all can discuss to make edits as well.
Great, makes sense.
Did we adopt, did we vote on adopting the bylaws?
We're tailing it for the next meeting.
That's right, thank you.
Yeah.
Sorry, I need coffee right now.
Okay, me too.
I guess, you know, I guess the other issue I, I would bring up with the ad hocks was just that it slows everything down so much because one meeting, you are formulating the ad hoc. Then you're waiting for two months until the ad hoc can present something. Then you're going to vote on it. I don't know, maybe you vote in that meeting, but it's just, it's just, it just feels very cumbersome to me. You can't, you can't add the special meeting until the ad hoc committee has reported and they're not going to be able to report until the next regular meeting. Though, right, you can't add a special meeting in the hopes that the ad hoc committee has something to present? Or maybe you can, I don't know.
I would hope that if we are having a special meeting, that it's because the ad hocks have reached out to the Chair and Vice Chair and said that we have what we promised and we would like to move this along.
So they can do that outside of an actual regularly scheduled meeting?
Yeah.
Thanks for clarifying that, Noe.
Yeah, it's good.
And of course, if there are time-sensitive issues or things that the city wants y'all to discuss and come up with recommendations, we can have a special meeting. You know, it doesn't just have to be ad hocks. It could be if you have anything on the agenda to discuss.
Are we in any trouble here that we've fallen below a quorum?
I'm, I'm still here.
Oh, you are, okay.
Sorry, I, I just, I'm nursing the baby.
Okay, good.
Sorry, I just turned my video off.
Right, no. I did see her, yeah, I did see Tamara still on.
Oh, I see, I had the chat thing on. I see her as a phone, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, sorry, yes, still here.
Shoo!
Right. So we were discussing 9B and the motion had passed to move this, adopt the bylaws at the next meeting so that the Chair can look into people's preferred times. Great. So then I'll make a note of that and we'll put it on the next agenda as well.
Thank you.
Moving on. 9C, discussion and possible action to adopt a mission statement. The mission statement is for the Commission to create. I had sent over some information about a mission statement. It is yours to create, but it's limited to what is within the Commission's scope. You can base the language off of the Commission responsibilities, jurisdictions, and authority. And if this is something you want to take your time to craft, as I had mentioned, you can also create an ad hoc for it and they can take a little more time to discuss and, and create. I'll leave the conversation to you.
Well, I would like to propose that we create an ad hoc to, to create a draft and then present it at the next meeting so that we have, the, the members that have not been able to join today can have input as well.
Was that a motion?
Yes.
Yeah.
The same, Bruce.
Oh, no, I would second that, but I did write a rough draft. So if you wanted to use it as a jumping off point, you could, so.
Okay.
Or to give to the ad hoc committee to work on.
That's great.
I don't know how you want to.
Yeah, that would be great for the committee to, to use as a starting point.
Okay, Chair, the Chair made a motion. Does anybody second? Second, great. So I'll do roll call and we shall see if it passes. So I'll start off the top of the list as usual. Sonia Wilson, not here, Bruce Letty.
Yes.
Mariel Kresel.
Yes.
Tamara Cagle.
Yes.
Alexis Hemphill Elsie.
Yes.
Boiko Pachinsky, absent, Pamela Raymer, absent, and David Pissara.
Yes.
Motion passes. So now that you have an ad hoc to craft this mission statement, you can have volunteers, volunteer to be on that ad hoc. No more than three Commissioners.
I'll volunteer.
Great, you got three. So as I had mentioned, all your city emails are your first name, period, last name, at santa monica.gov. And of course, you can reach out to me and I can connect you with your fellow Commissioners if needed. But it will be up to you to, to get together virtually in person and craft this to present for the next meeting.
And just to be clear, we can't get anybody else's input until the following meeting. We can't.
Correct.
Right.
Thank you so much.
Yeah. All right, moving on to the final item, public input. If anybody from the public would like to say anything, now is your time. And I will take that as there is no public input. So then it is 4:32 PM and this meeting is officially adjourned. I will stop the recording now and the broadcast.